Are we on here?
I think Brenda, you're muted.
Oh, I apologize.
Yeah.
I'll sign the order and can we please rise to the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the government of the United States of America and to the republic
for which it stands. For which it stands.
One nation, one nation, in the name of God, justice, and freedom.
From.
Sorry. Um, okay, the third item is minutes to consider an act upon the minutes of January 4th, 2021.
So moved. Yep.
Second.
Is there any discussion or comment?
None.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number four, because somebody give me a minute. Item number four. Um, resignation, this is for information purposes only. We have a resignation on the Board of Assessment, well, on January 14th, Board of Assessment Appeals, Carol DePietro, uh, on Conservation Commission, Elizabeth Jones, uh, Parking Authority, Robert Gorman. Roger Sherman, uh, School, Elementary School Building Committee, Alex Pleatses, and E., Water Pollution Control Authority Gerald Alessi. Uh, I would like to personally thank all of these, uh, people for serving on these various committees and commissions. And, uh, it, I will open it up to the board if they have any comments.
Just to echo your thanks, um, to Carol and Elizabeth and Robert, who I don't believe are seeking additional, um, yeah, participation at this time for various reasons. I see the other two are, um, but just thank you to Robert, Carol, and Elizabeth very much for their service.
I would like to echo those comments. Thank you for your service. It's not easy, uh, to serve on boards and commissions for the town, so we appreciate the effort, so thank you.
Okay. Next item, item number five. To hear and consider an act upon the following appointment. Paulette Cuso, who is, should be on the WebEx or calling for the Board of Assessment Appeals. Paulette, um, of Woods End Road, term 117 to 121, to fill the vacancy of Carol DePietro. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Um, I just wanted to comment that although I did not have a chance to talk to Paulette directly, I wish you lots of luck. Um, I did get to speak to some of the other members of, um, the Board of Assessment Appeals, on which I know Paulette Hexer previously, so you know what you are jumping into and have a tremendous amount of work cut out for you. So thank you in advance for your thoughtful, um, input and service.
I wish you, uh, best of luck in the new position and thank you for your service.
It, Paulette, are you on the line? I can't, um, see if she is or not, but, uh, I want to thank, uh, her for stepping up. Obviously, this is a tough time to have a resignation on this board. We have a revaluation and there are a lot of people in town who, uh, want to exercise their, um, ability to have, uh, a review by the Board of Assessment Appeals. And so it's very important that we have, um, the, the full amount of members that we can have, and so I'm glad that she was able to. She's actually served on this, on the Board of Assessment Appeals before, so she does have knowledge and she'll be able to jump right into action. Um, if I have, if there's no other comments, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved, thank you. Item number, uh, B, um, for Fire Commission. Uh, Alex Pleatses of Cambridge Street, Cambridge Street, uh, term from 1120 to 1125, to fill the vacancy of the late Harry R. Ackley. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And I will second that motion.
Awesome, and, uh, we see Alex is on, uh, on the line there, and so, uh, I will open it up for any comments or questions.
Uh, first of all, I want to take a moment to, uh, recognize that the years and years of service of Harry Ackley, um, can't say enough about what he did for the town, both in an official capacity in the fire department, as well as all his volunteer and elective efforts. I was, uh, very lucky to know Harry, uh, and benefit from his wise counsel and his, um, history of the town. Uh, Fairfield has a history of having special people, and Harry was, uh, most assuredly one of them, and it was my honor, uh, this last fall to be able to vote to put him back on this commission. I know how much it meant to him, and, uh, I just want to send out my condolences to his, his family one more time. He's a very special man. Uh, secondly, it is my high honor, uh, to vote for Alex Pleatses. We are equally lucky to have Alex with his background in emergency services, as well as military, uh, to step up and volunteer on this, uh, commission. Uh, Alex, I know just recently had a birthday, and I joke that I have shoes older than Alex. Um, but yet, you know, his years of experience, uh, belie his age, and, uh, Alex, thank you for stepping up.
I would also like to offer my condolences to the Ackley family, although I never had the honor of getting to meet Mr. Ackley. I, I've heard incredible things, and Alex, you are stepping into the shoes of what I understand is a giant, and I'm sorry I never had the chance to get to know him. Um, but I have gotten the chance to know you over the course of many in-depth, long, thoughtful, sometimes difficult conversations, and yesterday, our hour and a half long discussion was no exception. And I want to thank you for always, uh, approaching our conversations with an open mind. Um, we talked about a lot of things, but very specifically, you know, your role, uh, we had a chance to talk about your role as a fire commissioner and talked about, um, also your role in the, within the RTC, and you were really, I was really impressed with your answers, and, um, you've obviously given that thought and concern and very open about people's, um, any opportunity where someone might question, uh, the approach, or if there's a conflict of interest, that you are very happy to bring those concerns to the table and talk them through. Um, I thought that you brought, you bring obviously a lot of experience and wisdom, and I wish you luck and look forward to our continued conversations, wrestling, as they may be. So thank you for stepping in.
Thank you, Nancy, and I too would, um, uh, obviously, we spoke about Harry at a prior meeting, and I have known here, I knew Gary for over 20 years and had a very close and personal relationship with him, and he served our community in numerous capacities, and in his loss has felt greatly across our town. But I am excited, equally excited to have someone of Alex Pleatses' character and knowledge and experience be able to step up in the role. He has a lot of experience in the fire service and also his, uh, military service that I think will be a valuable asset to the Fire Commission. We don't normally have appointments that have this kind of experience, so I think it's vital, and I believe that members of our community serve in a whole host of different capacities, and I don't think it diminishes their ability to be able to serve in numerous roles. So I'm very excited to welcome Alex, and I appreciate him stepping up, and I think he's going to do a lovely job for our community and be a valuable asset to the Fire Commission. Alex, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Uh, yes, actually, if you don't mind, um, I, I think Nancy spoke to it quite well there, as did Tom, about, uh, Harry and his experience and the, the amount of time that he dedicated to the town. Uh, these are incredibly large shoes to fill. Um, well, I do have some service, obviously, with the volunteer department. We have a very professional, um, and well, well-run, uh, fire department here in town under Chief Dunn and Chief McCarthy, so, um, looking forward to, you know, being an advocate for, uh, the men and hopefully in the near future, women, uh, who wear the, uh, Fairfield Fire Department uniform. And, um, to Selectman Leftwood's point, I think, uh, you know, obviously, there, there are concerns when folks who are in the political realm step into, uh, you know, positions of community service here, and I think, uh, uh, those can be, um, well thought out sometimes, and, and others, they're, uh, a matter of perception. So to the extent that there would be a conflict, uh, of any kind, um, I think it's incumbent upon me in the process to make sure it's transparent, and, uh, my commitment to Selectman Leftwood's, that if there is, uh, an instance where that is being called into question, I will absolutely make sure to address that and to do so publicly, because I think, uh, we owe that to everybody as part of the process. Um, and I'd like to thank the three of you for your kind words, um, and I'm just very much looking forward to, uh, to being involved. This is a childhood dream of mine since I was a little kid, since first getting involved, and, uh, people have different aspirations in public service, but being able to come back to the fire service in some form, uh, especially with the group we have here in Fairfield, is, uh, is actually all I ever really wanted before getting sucked into everything else in town, so this is, uh, this, I can't thank you guys enough, and I'm really looking forward to the opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Hope there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously, congratulations, Alex.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And I'll tell you that, what I tell all people who are signed on for an appointment, you're welcome to leave if you have other things to do, but you're also welcome to stay, so just give me that option.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Alrighty. Uh, next item, number six. Um, this is a first select woman appointment only, um, and it's for information, uh, purposes only, but, um, I do have, uh, these are two items, uh, back to back, and actually three. So I have two, um, appointments to the Conservation Commission. We've actually had quite a bit of vacancies come up, and, uh, the longtime chairperson of the Conservation Commission, served the co-, uh, in this capacity for 10 years, and has done an admirable job, uh, is termed out unfortunately, and it is difficult for us because, uh, we, we're, we're in the midst of, uh, trying to hire a new Conservation Director, and so, uh, this commission is even more vitally important than it's ever been. So I was lucky enough to have Jerry Alessi, uh, step up to serve. I believe Jerry's, uh, Jerry's experience on the Planning and Zoning Commission for a number of years is going to be a valuable asset to our Conservation Commission, because many times they've worked in concert together, it's both land issues, and I think Jerry's experience and history will serve on this commission quite well. And I'm also, uh, appointing Luke Thomas to the Conservation Commission. Uh, Luke is a longtime Fairfielder, and he also has experience as attorney who has, um, presented applications to con- Conservation Commissions in other towns. So I think that experience is going to be very helpful for us, uh, on our Conservation Commission. So welcome, gentlemen. Um, I appreciate you both stepping up for our community. It is an important commission, and I am, uh, very grateful that you were willing to serve, and, uh, I'm going to give you both an opportunity, if you'd like, to say anything, uh, to myself or the, um, Board of Selectmen.
I'm just glad you asked, and I'm very happy I could still, uh, continue to serve the town of Fairfield in any capacity that you ask me to. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you very much for thinking of me, and I, uh, I hope my experience will, uh, be of benefit to the town and, uh, look to do good things and help in any capacity that I can. Uh, it, it was fortunate us to be a conservation opening, because it's something that I, I do do, and, uh, hopefully my knowledge will assist. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and I, I really appreciate both of you stepping up to serve. And our third, um, uh, first select woman, um, only appointment is, uh, someone who I haven't seen in a long time, and I'm, I'm happy to see on WebEx. Uh, it's nice to see you, David, and, um, uh, David has, uh, stepped up, and, and I think we are all very lucky for this, to step up and serve on our Economic Development Commission. David has a wealth of knowledge, he is extraordinarily bright, and has a lot of amazing experience that I think will be so helpful. Uh, as I spoke about when I first came into this position, how important economic development was to me, and it was my priority, uh, the pandemic has sidelined, did sideline that, uh, priority a bit. We had to pivot from expanding business in town to, to helping business survive. And so, um, I'm looking forward to refocusing and re-energizing that priority, and I think, David, you're going to make an amazing addition, and I'm really looking forward to working with you.
Madam First Select Woman, if I also may make a comment?
Sure.
I had the pleasure, and it's just to echo what you're saying, I had the pleasure of working with David. It's nice to see you again, when we both served on the RTM, and while our, um, politics and points of view were not aligned, sometimes, often, perhaps, um, we always were able to, um, have very thoughtful discussions. David asked great questions. His, um, focus and attention on the district was always a param- of paramount concern and, and first and foremost, um, but really enjoyed that working relationship, and he does bring incredible knowledge to the town, and we're, we're lucky that, you know, you're able to apply it in this way, and, and just the smarts that you bring to this is great, because it is an area of such importance, and welcome back is really what I wanted to say first and foremost, so, nice to see you.
I wanted to echo, um, the thanks to all three of you for using your time, dedication, and talent, uh, to serve the town. I happen to know you all a bit and have greatly enjoyed conversations and working with you in the past. Um, certainly, Mr. Fogel, Washington's losses, Fairfield's gains, so it's great to have you, uh, back in the fold, and I know that you will do great things on this particular board for the town. And Mr. Alessi and Mr. Thomas, um, congratulations on your appointment. Uh, it's a very important and sometimes overlooked commission in town, uh, that helps keep us, um, aligned and working closely with the economic development will help us chart a course for the town that is both, um, good economically, but also good with, uh, social and environmental issues, uh, relative to the town. So, uh, thank you for stepping up, and to everyone who is, uh, quote unquote, retiring off their boards, I cannot thank you enough for your service. Mr. Gumper, uh, thanks for everything over the 10-year period, and we look forward to catching up with you further on down the road. So thank you.
David, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. First time on, on this format, but, uh, just real briefly, uh, it's, first of all, great to see everyone, many familiar faces. I've been away, not full-time, I've, I've been here on every weekend for 20 months, but I haven't been here, uh, during the week, because I was working in Washington in public service, but it's, I'm thrilled to be back in my hometown and to do whatever I can in a small way to, to help what is obviously one of the most important functions, which is economic development. And so I look forward to serving, leveraging my private sector and public sector experience in business development and economic development, and I'll do whatever I can to support the Fairfield economy, so thank you all.
Thank you, David, I really do appreciate it. And again, because these are, uh, uh, first select woman appointments only, there won't be a vote on any of these, and I will again tell anyone who wants to get off, you're more than welcome, and, and anyone who would like to stay, you're welcome. Uh, the next item is number seven, and this is, uh, the Director of Human and Social Services, which requires Board of Finance and RTM approval. Uh, this is where Selectwoman Leftwood usually makes the motion.
Just about to do it, you red bum mind. So, to waive the reading, I make a motion to waive the reading of the item number.
No, I'd like her to read it, no, I'm kidding, second it.
Uh, second, Mr. Flynn?
Yes. Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, so I am just going to, uh, allow Julie to mark, are you on the line, Julie?
I sure am.
Okay, well, you, you're up.
Alrighty. So if it feels like you just did this last year, it's because you did. Just, um, this is the timing that I was supposed to do last year and, um, was laid on, so this is a new bus grant that we were awarded, um, and just, uh, just signed off on, hopefully, to accept. It's for the next replacement bus, which should come in two years. We're still awaiting the one that you approved last year, that should be here any day now. This bus is exactly what we ordered last time, it's, the estimated price is $71,000, the grant is for 80% or $56,800, and then we provide the rest of it, which is, um, $14,200 out of our senior center donations. So what I'm looking for is approval to accept that grant from you.
So I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
It's, Madam First Select Woman, is that okay?
Sure, of course.
Uh, hi, Julie, how are you?
Super, how you doing?
Good. So the $14,000, it's not coming out of anybody's budget, it's out of donations that are received directly to the center, and you're using that to augment this, this grant, is that correct?
It is. That's traditionally how we do these bus grants.
Yep. How many buses are the, how many buses are in service now?
Um, we have a fleet of five, and this replaces a bus that has 111,000 miles on it.
Are you gonna, what, what's the disposition of the bus with 111,000? What do you do with it?
Um, it goes to DPW and, um, uh, it's, if, honestly, Tom, it's out of sight, out of mind, I don't know what they do with them, I don't know if they sell them or use them for parts, but it goes over to DPW.
Do we know, Madam First Select Woman, what they do with these vehicles as they come in, by any chance?
They sell them.
They do, do we know where those funds actually end up going after they sell them?
I would imagine back into the general, but, um, we could find out.
Yeah, we, I, I think we should just probably take a look and just see where they go, just to, to make sure and see what we get for them. I'm, obviously, I'm going to support the, the acquisition here, Julie, 111,000 is, I mean, that doesn't sound in today's day and age for something like that, is that considered a lot of miles or anything?
It is, you know, they, the, it gets bumpy, it's, you know, sometimes it's, you know, we, like, this year, we replaced the natural gas bus rather than the bus that we're replacing with this next one, because the, the natural gas was so expensive to the town to have the, the pump there for one vehicle in the entire town.
Right.
So that bus probably would have lasted longer if it was regular gas, um, but it wasn't, it's, it was too expensive to retrofit it to be just a gas bus. So it's, the, it's the recommended time is 100,000 miles to start replacing these buses, and, you know, it has the lifts and everything, so, I mean, I suppose we could, we could hang on to them longer, but then we wouldn't, we would forego the grant.
Yeah, no, I'm just, um, I'm not asking to hang on to or foregoing the grant, I just want to make sure that whatever we're doing with these buses after they're either pulled out of service, we're getting the bet, the most out of them, whether it's we're selling them and, or whether it's we're repurposing them, or that they continue in service, I mean, do you ever have a need for more than five buses? I, I don't know.
No, no, we don't. We can't, we have generally, the most we have on the road at any one time is four, and we have one in reserve in case something happens to one of those buses.
Right. And are all those, all the buses bought with grants?
Um, three, three ha, well, including this one, it'll be three.
So the taxpayers have paid for the two, yeah.
I, I think so, that was, that was before my time, to be perfectly honest, but I know that, you know, since I've been here, there's been, there was one that Terry had gotten with a grant, and then these, the one that we're due on, and then this next one.
Right, right. Um, I just think we ought to make sure we have the, the plan in place, and if we do have one that's in reserve, maybe the town doesn't need to buy the next one, can forego actually paying for one and wait for another grant, if we can keep one of these older ones in reserve, it's just a thought.
That's great. The grant is available every two years, and if we stay on that track to do that, um, I, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, it, it almost sounds like every two, yeah, I get it, yep, okay. Thank you, Julie.
Sure.
I have no questions.
Okay, very good. Um, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, thank you, Julie.
Thanks, talk to you soon.
Bye, Julie, bye, Julie.
See ya.
That was a double bye, Julie.
Item number eight, uh, to hear in, uh, Attorney Baldwin is on the line, to hear and consider an act upon a one-word amendment to the racial equity and justice task force charge. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second it.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Jim? Yes.
Okay, good. Um, so I, I'll really let Nancy, um, take over from here, the, the first question was whether or not this even needed to go back before the Board of Selectmen, but in the opinion of the town clerk, it, uh, it is necessary, so it's, it's really a, a very quick and easy, uh, fix to the language and the intention of the, uh, task force chairs, who helped craft this along with myself, and so, uh, Nancy, you want to explain the, the change?
Sure, um, and thank you. Um, you used a word I had never heard before, but was happy for it, a Scrivener's error, I believe, was the language used, basically a typo, um, and that was from equality or inequality to inequity, so it was just a, a question of, uh, a typo and perhaps an autocorrect, and it's, that is the change. And while an important one, words matter, et cetera, it, it really was a question of, uh, of a typo in the charge, and it's in one place.
Just for the, just for the record, could you, um, just put it on, on, in public, uh, what that change is, please?
Um, I don't have the actual document in front of me, but it's, it's literally, I think in the, one of the first early paragraphs, the word is inequality, but for consistency, we had been using inequity.
Got it.
Throughout, so it's, it's that, that first, it appears once, where it's, it's, um, flip-flopped, where the, where the letters, it's inequality versus inequity.
Understood, thank you.
It, and, and, uh, Mr. Flynn, that is in the backup materials.
Yes, I just wanted it on the record, Jim, that's all, thank.
Thank you, and I just didn't pull it up, but, thank you.
I'm all set, no more questions.
So, um, obviously, this was asked, uh, to be put on the agenda several weeks ago, but there's been obviously a lot of, um, uh, news reports about the task force, obviously, over the last couple of, uh, week or so. And so I just want to, uh, verbalize, uh, or bring up that, um, you know, when I established this task force, or had the idea of doing this last summer, it was, um, with a genuine desire to have, uh, a task force review policies and procedures, similar to what the Strategic Planning Committee has done since 2017, looking at all aspects of how our town runs, and interviewing and doing research, and then putting together recommendations for the community to weigh in on, and also then to be approved by the town body. And so, um, I thought that this, this task force could bring real benefit to our community for the conversations and the review of some of, uh, the policies in our town, and that we could, uh, identify areas where we can improve along in this area. Um, and, and obviously, I think there isn't anyone who's unaware that, uh, we had issues this week where I think the task force may have been, um, misunderstood their charge and, uh, were trying to operate outside of it. I have received a lot of phone calls over the last, um, several days and on the weekend with residents who are concerned, actually, members of the task force as well, who can, are concerned that the task force's credibility may have been damaged by some of this, um, behavior. concerned that the task force's credibility may have been damaged by some of this behavior or action. So I am still very much committed to doing, having this work get done. I am considering, and I will bring, I need to think a bit more, but I think I may have been remiss not to put a long-term time elected official or someone who has served in elected office in our town for a long period of time on this committee in a role of leading or facilitating the charge and the members, so that the members could do the work and be engaged in the work and then have someone who knows the rules, the charter, the charge and Robert's rules and all of that to ensure that the committee stays on task and does the work that I think our community really would like to have get done. So these are something that, these are some thoughts that have come to mind to me over the last several days and I just wanted to openly share them with not just the Board of Selectmen, but also our community for anyone who might be listening. I, you know, I'm very, I'm very, I have a lot of concern, is all I'm going to say. And so I apologize if this is a little bit off topic, it just happened to come up as this item and I just wanted to share how I feel for my thoughts.
So, you know, if I may, and thank you for sharing your thoughts, I think we have a lot to discuss and I hope that you will join us on Thursday, anyone that is interested in, at our meeting on Thursday of a special meeting of the task force. I too am concerned. I do take issue with some of what you said and will just say respectfully that, a couple of things. I think that, as we alluded earlier, that sometimes we are at, we do wear different roles in town as we've just elected the head of the RTC to serve in a different capacity as a commissioner, which I was proud to support. I would argue that the very fact that I am serving on the Board of Selectmen keeps us on task and on, in line with the rules. We, in listening back to some of the meetings, which I've had a chance to do in the last two weeks, I'm actually very proud of how we are sticking to the rules and the way we are constantly checking in with the mandate and the mission. I don't think that anyone was trying to operate outside of the mission or the mandate. I think that there are interpretations and that respectfully, you have interpreted some of it in some way and I think that this will be, we have an opportunity on Thursday to discuss it with the task force in a more robust way. I am concerned that you're questioning the credibility of the task force itself. I think people would be hurt to hear that because there was a challenge to, to a request that was made, we had made three requests, which was the trigger for some of the anger and the vitriol that had appeared and hopefully, we can take some of the air out of it. You and I had a chance to talk this weekend and I think that it's not beneficial to the town or anyone. We need to be trying, because you say you are genuinely committed to this issue, we need to be working together and finding where there is common purpose, not trying to bring people down. There was an assertion that we were somehow trying to, that we somehow tainted the process of the hiring of the police chief and in no way was this ever about the individual candidates. We are so proud of our new chief of police. He's an excellent, qualified, talented individual who deserves that job. We were simply asking for process. And the one question, which was actually the only one that went answered from our inquiry as a task force, was about interviewing. And you just said yourself that part of our mission, you used the word interviewing and doing research. And that question was very triggering for some reason. And while some may interpret it outside of our purview, some have not interpreted to be outside of our purview, I think the real issue is why that question was so triggering and I hope that we can unpack that a little bit. But, you know, I'm not sure what you're saying about you wishing that you would put someone with more experience. I think that we all come to this. I've served and I'm not going to defend my, the experience that I bring to the table. What I bring is a dedication to the town, to the issue of racial equity and justice, a commitment to following the rules and an understanding of what those rules are. As you will recall from early meetings in your days, your first days as First Selectman, it's, you know, you stumble over it a little bit as you're getting used to being in that position. So no, it's not perfect, but I would also argue that we go out of our way as a task force and certainly in my role as co-chair to make sure that I am being inclusive and fair. And it is a very diverse group. We are probably the most, not only ethnically diverse, but politically diverse and it's not divisive. It has not been divisive. And we go out of our way to make sure that all points of view are heard. So I do think that this is an ongoing dialogue and a discussion and I think while you may have heard from people who are concerned, I have heard from as many and the outreach is there, we've seen, there is an outcry for us to continue. But yeah, I think it is going to be a discussion on how that is possible to best achieve our goals and objectives. So while I had one more final thought, at least in the short term, I had made the statement publicly that the task force was formed with a recognition that racial inequity and injustice exists here. I can't speak for the rest of the body and why you, I don't want to assign intent, but I do come into this work. I had come into this work with an assumption that it exists here and in the short time we've been working, we have seen through data, anecdotal and otherwise, and real, in conversations that there is a need for this work because that racism exists, both, you know, across, we've heard from the schools through a school survey and so on, and in speaking to various town departments, including the former chief of police who was committed to this work and the current chief of police who remains dedicated to this work and who has been very open about that. So I look forward to the ongoing discussion. It's not easy. It was never going to be easy. It's uncomfortable, but I think that's the nature of this work that we're trying to tackle. And I just hope that we can all approach it with an open mind and a spirit of collaboration.
Thank you Nancy. I hope you didn't misunderstand me when I said, or was saying that you weren't qualified. I said it may have been by mistake not to put on a longer-term elected official. You know, obviously, a few years in elected office is different than 10 years or, you know, having that wealth of experience. I just got concerned because of, after listening to some of that meeting on Thursday and actually went back and listened to when this was discussed on the January 5th meeting, it was clear to me there were questions from members saying, are we, is this within our purview? Should we, can, should we, I, one member even said, should we ask Brenda? And that was not addressed by the co-chairs. And so again, the town attorney serves for all of us. He serves for all boards and commissions. He's there to answer questions. I know that you utilize him quite frequently for questions on a lot of host of items and I just want to make sure that we're not having sort of, I just don't want this committee to turn into something that's in the press every other week or once a month on items as opposed to doing work. I just don't want to see, I just don't want, and again, I'm not saying that the committee lost credibility. I'm saying I have been said this to by members of our community and even some members of the task force. So I just wanted to have this discussion because I think it's important and I want us to be able to move forward in a transparent way and in an honest way. And I just wanted to voice my concern.
And if I may, I echo. I mean, for sure, we agree. I think it is not healthy or in the best interest of anybody for this to continually play out with any kind of negativity in the press. We should be able to have collaborative conversations to figure out the best way forward. I do ultimately think that we can take the experience of the past 10 days as a learning opportunity. I want to point out two things. I have no trouble asking questions when they come up. One member did say, because I also listened back to that, to that meeting. And what you also hear in that meeting is a lot of wrestling with next steps and how we can approach next steps. And we also said that we wish we had more time before this process had come up. But, you know, certainly the hiring of a chief of police in 2021 looks very different than it might have a year ago. And so what was unanimous from Republicans and affiliated voters, the Democrats, was that we needed to say something in some way. And so it was not that we were ignoring someone who asked, maybe we should ask Brenda. Ultimately, what we agreed to was unanimously, was a letter that, again, some people interpreted that all three asks were within our purview, some questioned whether it might be an overreach, but also we're very comfortable with the fact that we could be told no. And I think where we will have to unpack down the line is, again, what was so triggering by just the asking of the question. I hear you in terms of asking the attorney, but here was an example where I, we didn't feel we needed to because we felt we were clear. And we're also okay hearing no and having a discussion. I think in part, we were responding to a tone and again, we don't have to completely go backwards because I think now the opportunity is to go forwards. And then in terms of the credibility of the task force, I think it's something we have to look at, not just about the task force itself, but the credibility of what we're doing. And again, I invite anybody, and I know you said you were going to try to come on Thursday, to have this discussion because these are the discussions we need to be having, is the mandate, what, and the mission, what the town, what the task force and the town can deliver on right now. And, you know, again, I think, I am not speaking on behalf of the task force. I'm speaking on behalf of me here because I do think that people are questioning it, but not, because the task force itself has been working very fluidly and we've gotten a lot of incredible data, as you will see. And from listening to that January 5th phone call, I'm sure you found how much good work has been done in this, in this short time and the findings of our, of our deep listening project and the survey questions we've accumulated. So, and the partners that we have talked to and the fact that people have been so willing to open their door to us. So, you know, I hope that we can continue in an ongoing way that is meaningful.
Very good. And I look forward to joining your meeting at the beginning on Thursday.
Okay. And, and I think that it's important that people do hear that, and I'm not, I don't want to speak for you or put words in your mouth, you know, I certainly don't like how, you know, the negative, the negativity plays out in the press and I think it's a real opportunity for misunderstanding and deeper division. It's not good for anyone. It's certainly not good for my personal health. It's also, you know, in the perspective of what we're trying to do, it's just not, it's not fair and right and what happens is it overshadows the work itself and that's a great loss. So I, you know, I look forward, because I do think it's wrestling, to use a word that I used with Alex earlier. I think, you know, it's not easy. We never thought this was going to be easy. So, you know, I just want to echo that, I hope where the conversations happen is in, you know, rooms like this, I'm putting that in quotes, where it brings us to a better place of understanding, not a further place of division.
Thank you Nancy.
Thank you.
I look forward, I look forward to joining the meeting on Thursday.
Thank you, very much.
Okay. Next item. Oh, we still have a vote? I'm sorry?
Wait, well, a couple of things, okay. Sorry, I was unmute and didn't realize it. It's Tom. A couple of things before we go on to the vote, since we had this discussion. I've been following this both in the press and social media, as well as have had the opportunity to have private conversations on, on kind of the controversy here. And my perspective on it is this, number one, I don't think the task force is tainted, nor do I think the members of the task force, any of them, are anti-police or anything of the sort. I do think in reading the charge and having run a board for a number of years in this town, I do think that maybe there was just a bit of an overreach here. I don't think it was perhaps intentional. I think I was perfectly fine with the request to observe the process and maybe even after the process is concluded, conduct interviews with commission members about the process. I think that is perfectly appropriate to understand those processes. I think there was some language within the request that said to be part of the process and I think that's a bit premature regardless of the position. I also think it's premature because that's not the mandate of the board, I might say, of the commission. That wasn't the original charge or mandate. To observe the process, to eventually make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen on how any process can be improved as regards diversity and equality, that is the mandate and that's my expectation of that body and I think it's a very important one. I also think the unfortunate instance where police may have taken offense or that there was read into the fact that this was a police versus the racial task force, the diversity task force. I think that probably came about because there's been other profile hires within the town such as the head of DPW, the CFO and the human resources director, and there was no such request as it relates to those positions that I'm aware of. And I would actually have no problem with the task force wanting to understand the hiring process as a whole throughout the town to make sure that we're fair and balanced as regards that. But I think it's observe, it's gather facts, it's after gathering those facts, should it be determined that there's issues, recommendations to this body how to solve those issues, not actually inserting themselves or being part of the project right now or the process right now. With that being said, and Nancy, you used a great expression, which is ongoing dialogue. And I think that's very important. So what I think we should ask for is, I've always viewed this commission as having two phases. The first phase being information gathering, data gathering, quantifiable data gathering, to how you've reached your conclusions that in these areas, there is an issue. I would like to get a report on that. I would like to see that and understand what's been found and determined by the commission, to be followed up months later by the recommendations that the commissions might have to improve those processes that are found to be challenged or not appropriate. And I think that ongoing dialogue might be important in this instance. So that's all I wanted to say. I continue to support this task force. I continue to think they will do good work for us. Hey, when I ran the Board of Finance, there were occasions that we were challenged with overreaching. So I can understand that and I think we just need to move along to the business at hand. So thank you very much for the time to address this and I appreciate hearing both of your perspectives on it as well.
Thank you Tom. And maybe that's not a bad idea Nancy, you know, having sort of like some updates, so we're kept in the loop or we just get to hear kind of all the stuff that you're working on.
I really appreciate that and Tom, thank you for your comments. And you know, Brenda, I think, thank you for bringing this to the light of day. I mean, I was prepared to just kind of move forward after we talked about the syntax error, the Scrivener's error, but I think it's important to have these conversations in the light of day, actually. And Tom, you know, you've offered me the opportunity to think about some things and I look forward to sharing with the task force that you are, or perhaps Brenda, you can offer this if you're able to join, when you're able to join us at the meeting on Thursday because you'll find like really good work has been done so far and thoughtful and it's, this team that's been assembled is very committed and we bring very different perspectives to the table. And, and we bring very different perspectives to the table. So I look forward to giving them the opportunity to come for this body, and if it has to be that, that they're able to do it, you know, any, at any point, you know, to, to show you the work that they've done. I think that they would welcome, you know, again, not speaking on behalf of a whole group, but I'm sure that they would welcome the opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we're at the vote on the change to the, the language. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number nine. Unfortunately, our purchasing director is not well, and so he's not able to contribute. But this item is to consider, to hear and consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into agreement with the PKF O'Connor Davies to review the town draft of the new purchasing policy and procedural manual to provide the town with written recommendations for suggested changes or additions to the same as outlined in the proposal submitted January 5, 2021 for a total amount not to exceed $10,000. Funding for these services will be taken from, and I'm not going to read the whole account number, so I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Seconded, and this, seconded. Sorry.
All right. Thank you. And I just want to acknowledge that Board of Finance member, Chris DeWitt, is on the line. And so this is going back for a while, just to give a little history for anybody who may be listening in the public. The Board of Finance has always had purchasing policies, and we also had a purchasing policy in the town. Now, obviously, there was a DPW audit done that was extraordinarily detailed, and that has had a lot of information in it. And the town, I put together a working group with our CAO leading the working group, along with our purchasing director involved, DPW, Finance, and all of these different sections that were identified to be able to come together and start addressing them. And there's a lot of information, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. Obviously, at the time, we didn't have a full-time DPW director, so we do now, which is very good. But this working group worked a lot, very hard to gather a lot of recommendations on purchasing. And Gerald Foley took those recommendations and put together this manual. And then we shared it with Chris, who, who was very happy with it and looked at it and worked on it as well. And so I think now, I'm just going to hand it over to you, Chris, if you want to talk about what your, what the Board of Finance wants to do is in, in terms of taking what was written by Gerald and then having it reviewed.
Thank you, Madam First Select Woman. That was a great overview. And yes, I spoke to, by email anyway, spoke to Mr. Foley, and I hope he's feeling better. Yeah, Mr. Foley, you know, we had a first draft of the purchasing policies. We reached out to Mr. Santafanti, and I said, listen, I think we need help drafting our purchasing policies, to which he responded with a quote for $20,000 worth of, of services to actually write our policies. And then, in the subsequent weeks, a lot of discussions with Mr. Foley and Mr. Bremer and a lot of other people, and man, we've just, just created a wonderful document that, that, you know, because I'm, I'm running the subcommittee meeting on purchasing policies for Board of Finance, because we ultimately have to approve them, right? But anyway, Mr. Foley and his team did a great job. And we went back to Mr. Santafanti and said, listen, I, I think you still add value as a reviewer. And by the way, the guy who did the audit, the DPW audit, which, which you just referenced, the First Select Woman just mentioned. So he came back and he revised his quote to $10,000. I believe it was in December, the Board of Finance moved to take $10,000 out of the contingency and move it to, I believe that account, that number, the log number you didn't read, is the Board of Finance fees and professional services. So the request is for you to sign the, the document that was provided by Mr. Santafanti, and he will ultimately do the review. He will support meetings with my committee, and then he'll ultimately support any changes, and then the final meeting with the Board of Finance.
Very good. I'm going to open it up for questions.
I think you're on mute, Mr. Flynn.
Boy, you don't talk for a while and it automatically mute you. I'm sorry about that. Mr. DeWitt, great to see you. I did have a couple of questions.
Of course.
Yeah. So, the $10,000 that's referred to here, you guys moved it from contingency over to your professional services, is that what you're saying, early in December?
Yes, sir.
And so this is to spend that, those funds in order to engage them to review the purchasing policy that you've put together, right?
Well, that, that Mr. Foley and his team put together, yes, and that, the, the document that the Board of Finance will ultimately vote on and approve, yes.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. Chris, there's one thing that's, it doesn't concern me, I just want a clarification. Back when we served together on the Board of Finance, you did a great job working with the purchasing director at the time, as well as using your, utilizing your outside skillset to design a purchasing policy that ran through several of the town bodies and was eventually adopted. Is that, that's all fair, right? Including your great skillset, right?
Well, especially my great skillset, but, but yes, in a, in a, in a limited way, that, that is accurate. Compared to the document that I had originally worked with Ms. Holland at the time.
Right.
This is a much more comprehensive document than, than that.
So is that, and that goes to my point, is I thought part of the issue we were having with DPW that became uncovered was the fact that they weren't even following the policy that was already implemented. Is that a fair statement or no?
Having reviewed the audit findings in, in general terms, I, I think that's an accurate statement.
Right. So the issue here is going to come down, my, my point being, I, I think the statement that you're talking about that you originally made, the policy was a little bit broad. So they didn't follow the spirit of that statement, and then they went off course and did what they did, and we all know the results of that. Which just points out that you've put in a more robust policy now, and I fully support an outside auditor reviewing it and appining on it so you can tighten it up. But it's still going to come down to the execution and following this policy as we move forward, right?
Ultimately, yes, the compliance will come down to the individuals in town complying with the policy. But, but what I might add, and I'm glad you brought this up, Mr. Flynn, there are a couple audit findings that are kind of, kind of generalities, you know? They didn't follow the purchasing policy in regards to, you know, whatever the specific topic was. What, what, what Mr. Foley's done a really good job of now is setting, setting very specific limits and very specific protocols that are, are less, not, I don't want to say the last document was ambiguous, but it's, it's less ambiguous now, if, if that makes any sense. So I think it's more, but one of the big things that, that I had originally, that I originally spoken to the First Select one about, First Select woman about was, you know, we need something that's enforceable. So when something happens and we say, oh, this department didn't follow the policy, you got to be able to look at the policy and say, well, what part of this didn't I follow, right? So along with being more comprehensive, I, I think it's a more enforceable policy.
Well, and, and the, and the thing I think that you should ask be done as part of this, Chris, and it goes right to the point, is the communication of the policy. And the communication of not just the specifics of the policy, but the communication when there's found something that is outside the policy. Because, you know, it's, it's like my father used to say, you know, locks were built to keep honest people honest, right? Purchasing policy is put in place to keep honest people honest, but you can always find your way around a policy if you really want to. And I think we need to put something in place in terms of communication throughout the town that comes out of this. And I'd be interested in what best practices are that, to make sure that this policy, we don't pay $10,000 for a review and it sits on a shelf, is more of a guide and a, and a paperweight as opposed to a living and breathing document that's used.
Yeah. It's, it's, you, you bring up a good point, right? So if you considered a policy to be the big thing that you ultimately always go back to for reference, each individual department should have a procedure manual.
Right.
So I'll, I'll give you, for example, the First, the First Select Woman's office might not ever need to use a credit card. So the credit card policy wouldn't necessarily go in her procedure manual because, you know, they don't, they don't use credit cards, right? DPW very well may have an extensive need to use a credit card, you know, for, for town business. And in their procedure manual, there would be a credit card, you know, credit card, abbreviated credit card policy, right? So, think of it this way, if, if you're sitting in DPW and you're like, I got this company credit card, I wonder if I could go spend $50,000 and go buy a new generator? You open up your procedures and it says, well, no, your limit's $10,000. The actual policy might be three pages long in credit cards, but if you look at it and say, oh, I can only spend $10,000, then you've got your guidelines. If, if, if you're on the hairy edge, you can always go back and pick up the policy book, which will be, like I said, more voluminous than the procedure, and, and dig into it in that way.
Right.
But, but I echo your, your sentiment. I, I, listen, Mr. Foley's doing a great job with this thing. I don't want this to sit on the, I don't want this to sit in a bookshelf and just collect dust, right? But, but I, I think the department heads, especially after all the things we've gone through right now, I think the department heads are very sensitive to the fact that we need this. And the $10,000, you know, the $10,000 for Mr. Santafanti is just a, is just a part of the overall cost. I mean, Mr. Foley's put a lot of time into this, probably more than $10,000 worth, given, you know, his time and, and the team's time. So there's, there's a large town investment in this, in time and, and dollars.
Thank you, Chris. To answer that too, Tom, yes, a lot of people put in, especially Gerald, but like CAO, Tom Bremer, and, and as Chris alluded to, department heads really invested in this, and because we do want to make sure it's implemented. And that was something I shared with the chairman of the Board of Finance frequently throughout this process, that I, that I wanted us to be involved in the policy because policies can be written all the time, but if they're not easily implemented, or if department heads don't think they can work it, they're not going to do it. And there is really no consequence for that. Obviously, it takes strong management and oversight from the top, which I am providing. And so we're making sure, but we also want to make sure that they, we had buy-in, that it was, we weren't asking them to do stuff that was very difficult and bureaucratic to the point where it just didn't make sense and it made a lot more work for them. So I think we've come up with a very good product. Gerald did put a tremendous amount of work into it, as did our planning group. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that. And so hopefully, we're going to have a nice policy. It is a bit, as Chris alluded to, a lot longer than the, the prior policy. I think the prior policy was about three pages long. This one is very long. But it does have a good amount of detail in there, and I think it's a nice, it's a blueprint for our department who had, who had access and input in the process. But, so we all know what everybody should be doing.
I think that I would like Mr. Santafani and his team to address how this should be, what are best practices in distribution of this policy, and any monitoring and enforcement of the policy after it's distributed. It's kind of the day two items as opposed to just drafting the policy.
Yeah. We, you know, we've, we've discussed that, you know, my, my committee, it's, it's Ms. Charlton and myself are on the committee, the purchasing policy committee of the Board of Finance. We've, we've spoken to Mr. Santafanti about that. And one of the things that I plan to do on the night that we actually vote for the Board of Finance, because we, because the Board of Finance does have to vote for this, I do want to put in next step recommendations, and, and that's going to be top of the list.
Exactly.
And Mr. Bremer, Mr. Bremer's been really involved in the, the behind the scenes execution, and I think he'll, him and his team will roll out the, the next, you know, version of procedures.
Yep. Great. Thank you, Chris.
Nancy, do you have any questions?
No, thanks. I've been listening and following. Thank you. Thank you, Tom, for asking the questions, Mr. DeWitt for answering them. I have no further.
Very good. All right. If there's no further, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. I will make Mr. Santafanti aware that that's a signed document.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Our, our next item is to consider an act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of $16,261.99. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next item, thank you, Nancy. The next item is item number 11 to hear, consider an act upon any other business, which shall properly become, probably come before this meeting. And the next is a quick update. Wanted to update those of you who may be unaware and that the state's COVID vaccine appointment assistant line set up by the governor doesn't appear to be working. We had been giving the number to residents 75 and up who called looking for help registering for vaccines as they didn't have computer access or capability. Not long after referring these residents, we realized that they were no longer providing live agents or take, to take or return calls from people seeking assistance in registering for their vaccine. The voice recording directed Connecticut residents either to call the vaccine clinic in East Hartford, that was taking phone appointments, or go online and search for specific clinics. This obviously was not helpful for those residents without internet, and we do understand the phone, that the phone line was created for. We shared this with the state delegation today, and I believe Senator Wong might have been on a Zoom or some conference meeting with Department of Public Health and shared this exact information from us today. And they didn't, weren't aware that it wasn't working. So they're, hopefully, they're going to jump into action and get this worked out because it's important. And I don't know if I've mentioned to you, the town hall's been called in every department from residents, not only in our town, but outside of our town, looking for assistance. So I am happy though to announce, however, that, that the work of our emergency management team and Health Department, we've launched a call center to assist in answering questions regarding the vaccine rollout. Now, they're not able to assign people up or do any of that, but they do have information to share, basic information that a lot of our residents seem to be in need of. The phone number for that is 203-256-3083. And it's open from 10 to 1, and it's staffed with volunteers and they, to help answer questions. But they are, again, not able to sign up residents for vaccines. We continue to post updates on the town's home, homepage at www.fairfieldct.org under the vaccine update. Also posted on the vaccine update page is information on other vaccination locations nearby besides our Health Department's clinic. And again, if your doctor is affiliated with Yale New Haven Health, you can create an appointment through their online system. Hartford Healthcare is taking vaccination appointments for their location at St. Vincent's Hospital in Bridgeport. If you're having difficulty scheduling your appointment through the VAM system, we also posted helpful links that include VAM's navigation instructions and how to create your VAM's account and schedule your first appointment. account and schedule your first appointment. So I hope that's helpful, and I hope that the call center will be able to field some of the calls that have been coming in here and be able to assist people who do have those questions. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
It's unfortunate that the state system is down, that's all I'll say, and I'm sure that was a source of major frustration for people.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, now that, you know, we've shared that and it's been shared with them, hopefully they'll, will be, will get there.
Yeah.
I, I hope people, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
I just wanted to say, I know it's frustrating, you know, there's so much information out there, and residents, you know, they see things on the news, they think 65, they hear Florida, they hear what other states are doing, they think it's our state, or they don't understand why, you know, for example, Fairfield, they can't schedule their next appointment right away once they get their first vaccine, and it's because we are dependent upon accessing vaccinations. So our Health Department can't set up a clinic unless we know we are going to have vaccines and have that confirmation of getting them. So it's, it's hard for people to understand, we're doing our best, our Health Department once again is doing an amazing job, and we're doing our best to answer as many questions as possible for the community, but there's a lot of concern out there. We, I participated in a Department of Public Health call, Zoom call with the state delegation and Sam and myself on, last week, on, I believe it was Tuesday or Wednesday night, and they asked me, you know, what do you, what, what input or what do you have, questions you have, and basically what I said is, we need more vaccines, and we need more resources to be able to, to give those vaccines out. And that's, you know, basic to bottom, right? We need more vaccines, and we need more people to help us give them. But hopefully, we'll, we'll be seeing CVS and all those other locations and doctors, individual doctors being able to dispense the vaccines as quickly as possible once they get it. So I know there's some frustration out there, so whatever you can do to point people to the website and tell them we have this call center, so that'll be helpful, and take some of the pressure off our Health Department, saying you're literally receiving thousands of phone calls on, on the vaccine rollout.
I just wanted to offer that, I know this has been incredibly frustrating in many directions, but if I could offer sort of the flip side of this, the fact that the vaccine is here and coming, and, and again, I know for a lot of people, I'm not undermining the real frustration people feel, but I do think it's an opportunity to, to start to be hopeful about a new day that's dawning, where we will, we will be able to move more freely, and I know it's something we are all desperate to do, but for me, as much as it is a source of frustration, it is also a source of minor celebration, because it feels like finally, finally, there is a light at the end of this very challenging tunnel.
Thank you, Nancy, and I was just alerted that I gave out one digit wrong, I was given one digit wrong, so I'm going to repeat it now. The phone number to call in from 10 to 1 to have your questions answered is (203) 256-3082. Again, that's (256) 3082. And we will post that, it was posted, Jackie's telling me, and so people will have that access.
And that's kind of the general, like, vaccine question hotline?
Yes, because I think it's, we, we cert volunteers and people could just answer basic questions that have been put together by our Health Department.
Well, that is one social media post that I am certain will not be met with any disagreement. I will put that up and share it broadly.
Awesome, thank you, and information is always welcome, right? Now, Jack, where do we have that? Oh, it's right on our homepage, Nancy, the town's homepage.
Yeah, I'll share a link to it as well.
Perfect, thank you. All right, so we, I think, we are going to...
Nancy, you're a loud writer.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
No problem.
Intense, like my personality.
Do we adjourn, or do we have to go into executive session?
I'm sorry, you're right, motion to go into executive session, sorry.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are, we just came out of executive session, there were no votes taken in executive session, and now I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Good luck tonight.
Oh, good luck, Brenda, thank, yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay.